Are we live? Okay, pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 17th, 2021 meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. We are in our fifteenth month of a remote operation. Hopefully that'll come to an end soon. I will look to Steve Gabba to update us when he has new information about the governor's laws, since clearly he governor's executive work is clearly that's changed related to many other activities related to COVID. So I suspect there'll be an update in this as well. Cheryl, could you say the role call, please?
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon. Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
And Neil Zuckerman.
And here, thank you very much, Cheryl. All right, so let's have the approval of the minutes for our special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the May 13th special meeting, please?
I just want to make one point out one error, which is in the headline.
Well, let's 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 get the motion first and second, and then we'll take the edits. I didn't get.
All right.
So motion to approve the minutes.
Make the motion.
Second, okay, any any discussion? Okay, Kim, go ahead.
So I just have one, well, two things. The first thing is that it says specially HHSF slash DGC in the header. So it's just a typo, no big deal. And the other thing I'm going to say is, Cheryl, thank you for including sort of most of the conversation instead of restating most of it. I find that's really more helpful for me when I know pretty much what everybody said instead of somebody else interpreting it. When I know that we go back and forth on how we do the minutes, but I like these, so thank you.
Any other edits? None? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, okay. Cheryl, do we have the subsequent weeks' meeting minutes? We do not have that yet?
They'll be in the next packet they're done, but they didn't meet the deadline.
That's fine. There's a lot of, there was a lot to cover on May 13th. I think that makes a lot of sense. Okay, and then we have a number of escrow returns, which I'd love Stephen Ron to comment on each internal, start with the Vineyard Road letter from Bill Florence.
Vineyard Road appears to be, since they didn't attach a copy of the bond or anything, a maintenance, might have been construction as well, but at least a maintenance bond for construction of a roadway, I would assume, and I don't know, but I'm assuming in a subdivision. When, this is not an escrow, in other words. This is a bond for a road. Now, when the road is constructed and the time for turning over the bond arrives, the applicant is supposed to apply to the town board. The town board's supposed to send it to the town engineer and to the highway department. And they are supposed to report back to the town board that the work has been done, it's satisfactory, and the bond can be released. The planning board doesn't really play a part in it as far as that goes. This has kind of got sent over because all the escrows got sent over. So what I'm going to do with the board's permission is I will write a letter back to the town board. I'll copy the highway department, I'll copy Ron on it, and I'll ask Tara to fish out a copy of this bond so that we can take a look at it. And then Ron and the highway superintendent will have to report back to the town board. And I'll lay that all out. My guess is that it should be returned, but you know, until you look at it, you don't know. So I don't think the planning board should take any action on this except to allow me to send that letter. I don't know if Ron feels otherwise, but that's the way I view it.
Is that just related to the cell tower, Steve?
I have no, I, I, I just don't recall. This was quite a while ago.
It says 1995. It says 1995, and Vineyard Road is obviously the road upon which now Magazzino sits with a number of homes that Mr. Fadden owned. So I think that's a good path. But Ron, you were going to answer Steve, please.
Yeah, no, as was just indicated, I just recognized it's a project that's 25 years old. It very likely is only just a roadway itself at the time it was first constructed. We have to look at the bond, but I suspect it can easily be released at this point.
Mr. Gabba, oh, go ahead, Ron, sorry.
No, no, we'll determine that.
So Steve, one ask, I'd like to augment your plan, which is I would like you to stay in contact with Mr. Florence, the lawyer.
I'll copy him on the letter.
Thank you. You did not mention that, and I suspect us going through the pathway will lead to him to not know what's happening. I don't know if Mr. Florence is on the video here. And so if he's not, it'd be great if you just keep him abreast of what's going on.
I will.
Board members, are you okay with directing Steve as he outlines? Any comments on that? I don't know if we need to vote on that. I think just a voice.
I don't think you need to vote.
Anybody with opposed to that approach? No, anyone? No. Okay, so Steve, you're directed as you're self-directed, I guess. And go forth and discover. Okay, Ricky, next escrow matter, I believe. The letter, not exactly sure. Mr. Gabba is actually cited, as is Ron in it. Reactions?
This isn't, this isn't a review escrow. We are not owed any funds on this, so my firm has no problem with return of whatever's left.
Same, same with me, although he does make the point that he expects to get the escrow fund returned in full. Certainly, there's been expenses against the project.
We'll see about that, but whatever's left, we'll get.
Right.
Okay.
There should be a vote on it.
Hope your fees have kept up with inflation and not exceeded it. So, okay, so, so I'm sorry, do we need a vote on returning escrow? I think we do. Yeah. So can I have a motion to return Mr. Ricky's remaining escrow?
I'll make that motion.
Peter, second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Sorry.
Aye.
A discussion of favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Final one related to what appears to be 3315. Oh, sorry, this is Slopline. It's right up sequence here. This had Slopline. The Newtons in email. The subdivision owned by Slopline.
This is also an escrow return, and my firm is not owed any outstanding bills on Slopline. So we have no problem with returning it.
I am also not owed any, any monies. So I have no objection to it.
Fine, okay. A motion to return the escrow to Ceni Hudson.
I'll make that motion.
Peter, thank you. Heidi, second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Okay. We are a fallible board, but we are a flexible board. And so thanks to the diligence of of a former school teacher and the chair of the Desmond Fish Library Board of Need Apprentice for realizing that we did not put the Desmond Fish Library in the board on the agenda night. I'll take that as my own failing, given that I have been recusing myself as a member of that board. I'll turn it over to my acting, to the acting chair, first vice chair, Kim Connor, to cover the matter of the Desmond Fish Library, and I will go on mute. Can you have the control?
Okay, so we were hoping tonight that we could, you know, just put it on the agenda and move forward. But it turns out there is a 48-hour minimum notification required for the agenda items. So we will not be able to take action on this tonight, although we have directed Ron to prepare resolutions for approval. So one of the things we talked about doing is maybe calling a special meeting next week when we could all just, you know, zoom in, vote on the resolutions, and then zoom out, and hopefully, so what I'd like to do is just sort of pull the board to see if they think that's possible and what night we could do that. So I'll just go around from my screen. I'll start with Neil Toman.
I, that's fine.
For you. Peter Lewis?
Fine with me.
Heidi?
Yes, fine with me.
Laura?
Fine with me.
And, oh, and Dennis, I can't see because he's on mute, or he's not on, now he's not on mute. That worked for you, Dennis?
Um. Yeah.
I'm going to take that as a yes. Maybe sometimes when we can't hear, maybe we should have you raise your hand on the screen. So I think that's unanimous. So what should we just do next Thursday? Does that work for everybody?
That's the 24th.
Good question. Yep, 24th.
Yes, that works.
7:30.
7:30.
All right.
Okay, so I'll.
I'm good with that if you can hear me.
We can hear you now. Steve, do we need to make a motion to that effect?
We usually do for special meetings, so technically the chairman can schedule them without it. But, you know, I think in this instance, it would be best.
Okay, so I'd like someone to make a motion that we hold a special meeting next Thursday, June 24th at 7:30 PM to review the Desmond Fish Library approvals.
I'll make that motion.
Peter first, Laura second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No, and no abstentions? Okay, and Neil Zuckerman's abstain is recused because he's not.
Cheryl, if you need any help with the notice, just let us know, and we'll get that done. And you can post it on the website and post it outside the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, so we have one question. Cecilia wants to know if we want to videotape this.
Well, it's up to the board.
Cecilia, can, I like, you know, maybe you can weigh in. Can we just record it ourselves if we, you know, set up a Zoom?
Sure, you can record it.
Are you available next week?
Yeah, I can be available.
Okay, well, we might as well just.
Cheryl can record it. It just been, if you want it on the air, then I'll just get a copy of it.
Okay, well.
I'm available, or Cheryl can record.
It doesn't matter either way for me, but I think, why don't we have you do it, Cecilia, since you're, you know.
I'll set you up a link.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Terrific. So I think that concludes, I'm sorry, Anita, you know, to be the bearer of bad news, but it's only a week.
All right, public notice is important. So thank you. I appreciate your, I appreciate your being flexible and meeting next week. Thank you very much.
All right, well, wait, does it, does it need to be in the paper, though?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, all right, sorry.
No worries.
Cool. So I'm going to hand us back to Neil then, and we'll move on to the next item. Thank you all.
All right, Kim, thank you. Anita, again, apologies. One of the challenges of public service in our town. I will also, I am also recused for our next item as I'm proximate neighbor of the Flag Snyder application. I turn over this public hearing to Mr. Toman, who's acting chair for this application, and is our second vice chair. Mr. Toman, you have the control.
Thank you, Mr. Zuckerman. So we have the Flag application. 699 Old Albany Post Road. Welcome back, Mr. Flag, Mr. Spence, and we have a new participant, Harry, get me, help me get your last name right, Harry Rokeville. Are we on board? Okay, I see their names, so I think we're good. So we have a public hearing tonight. Procedurally, Steve, do we want to have comments first? Do you want to do a backstory, or do we want to go straight into the public hearing?
First thing to do is read the notice of public hearing.
Okay.
Just give some indication of what it is. The usual practice of the board is to allow the applicant to make a brief presentation so that anyone tuning in for the first time would know, you know, what the application's all about and what the issues are. Then it's up to you, Neil. Do you want to take comments from the public first? Or do you want to ask the board if they have any comments? Sometimes the board members say, well, we want to wait here from the public before we make our comments. It's not really a set procedure once the project's introduced, so.
Okay, thanks. Cheryl, you want to kick us off then and give the notice?
Sure. The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 17th, 2021, starting at 7:30 PM via Zoom to consider the following application. Christopher Flag and Heidi Snyder, 699 Old Albany Post Road, Garrison, New York, tax map number 61 dot dash three dash six. Applicant is seeking barn-like addition consisting of a family room, bedroom with bath, garden, tool storage, and greenhouse connected to an existing four-bedroom house via a covered pergola. The addition totals 1,762 square feet on two levels. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application flat map and other related materials may be seen in the office of the planning board at the building department to Cedar Street, Old Spring. Prior contact with Cheryl Rocket is required to arrange access to the documents at 845-265-5202. If you would like to attend the Zoom meeting, please email CherylRocket@PhillipsTown.com before 7:00 PM on June 17th, 2021, dated at Phillips Town, New York, this 20th day of May, 2021. Neil Zuckerman, Chairman.
Thank you, Cheryl. So where we've, where we are, sort of the two things that have been out there pending are the approval of the septic system from the Putnam County Board of Health and a letter from Hudson Highlands Land Trust, which we have. Did everybody get that? Did everybody see the latest that went out? Cheryl sent it out. The generally got a clean bill of health from the Hudson Highlands Land Trust, and it appears as though the Putnam County Board of Health is not seeing anything off, you know, they still have to review it, but they seem to be going along with it in spirit. So does anybody else have any comments to make before we go to a public hearing? Okay. Cheryl, I guess we start the public hearing now? Anybody on board? Anybody flagging us?
Anyone wants to speak, if they could raise their hand?
Well, Cheryl, the applicant should make a brief presentation as to what the project is. If they have a representative here, I would suggest we bring them in and let them explain the project briefly.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Flag, Mr. Spence?
Yeah, Chris, are you? Chris is commuting at the moment. And, but I believe he is on board and can hear us and see us and talk to us. Chris, do you want to start off with an introduction?
I just moved him over. He had gotten bumped back over, so.
Okay, I, I've been, sorry, I've been trying to talk, but I somehow got kicked back. Yeah, I, our presentation can be made by our architect, David Spence, who graciously came up with this addition concept. But we are looking to do an addition that will accommodate our family as we're growing, our kids are getting older, and we're hoping, we have a house with some very modest-sized bedrooms and hoping that this will get passed tonight. We've tried to honor the period nature of the house by doing an addition that's not glommed onto the house, but really honors the, the full period nature of the house. And we've meticulously spent time trying to restore elements of the historic nature of the house. So we're hoping that this will pass tonight. And David, maybe you have some other thoughts?
Sure. Cheryl, is it possible I can share my screen briefly just to give a visual?
Yes.
So these images, thank you very much. My name's David Spence. I'm the architect for the project. These images here are on your cover sheet of the drawings, and they show the existing property. And here in the middle image is a view from Old Albany Post Road at the intersection with Traverse Corners. And as you can see, the driveway entrance between the stone wall, that will remain unchanged. And it's a stone driveway, and it's almost more of a, instead of a driveway, it's more of a stone lot, if you will, or a court. And as such, the addition proposed is, it's sort of behind this tree here, if you can see my cursor. And as Chris mentioned, the idea of the, of the addition, we tried various scenarios of adding to the house, and we really wanted to honor the form of the existing house. It has roof lines going out in all different directions, a wraparound porch on a few elevations. And so we really didn't want to sort of, as Chris said, glom onto it. So as per the HH LT easement, we are limited to where we can put an addition on. And so in this case, it's off the west corner of the house, and it, it is connected by a pergola to, to allow passage between the main house and, and the family room. So as you can see, we, we wanted to sort of, as in the nature of the area of the rural character of adjacent barns and such, we wanted to sort of make a riff off on that idea and create sort of a barn-like structure that's of scale and keeping with the house. Some of the architectural detailing is carried over. It does have a, the current house does not have a garage or anything like that. It merely has a small garden tool shed. So we're adding a space for, for the, for bikes and for garden tools and such. And, and then the family room on the lower level. These are just some views off the, sort of the backside is a greenhouse. The owners are avid gardeners. So we have a greenhouse proposed for that. And by the way, the, the footprint, not the footprint of, yes, the footprint of the greenhouse did get slightly smaller since the last meeting as we've been working on more of the details of the design. But here you can see the, the main house in the upper right, and then the, the addition connected by the pergola structure here off to the left here. The driveway, as I mentioned, is more of a court currently. And what we're doing is we're cutting back the edge of the stone and sort of reshaping this, this edge of the driveway to move it away from the main house, away from the addition, create more, more landscaping in between. You can see in this dash line here what the current edge of the stone is doing. So we're just sort of moving that over so there's access to the garden tool area. And Harry can, our site engineer, can speak to any, any questions that are regarding the septic system. But as per the health department's, it was actually their recommendation to consider an independent system from the current one of the house which exists over here. So to the west was proposed a new system basically in back of the addition located here. It's a little light on your plans, but essentially there is only one tree being removed to install that system. And it is adequately sized for the, for the addition. And as mentioned before, they are on board with this, this approach. This is just an overall site, site view. In addition to the pergola, there's also a patio terrace that sort of joins the two, the two structures there. And that, and then we just have a site section, excuse me, that shows that the addition sort of berms in slightly into the hillside. We've also confirmed that cut and fill will be balanced, so no fill would be leaving the property. And that's it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Spence. Harry, do you want to weigh in on some of this?
Sure, I could do a brief presentation of my plan as well. Just appear with me for a second while I share my site plan. Let me know when you can all see it.
You're good.
Okay, very good. So here, Harry Rochel, civil engineer for the project. As David had mentioned, septic system is proposed here. He mentioned there was one tree being removed. I highlighted it here in red so you guys could see exactly where it is. And all the trees that are hashed will be staying, so it is just this one tree that needs to be removed. I know the willow is of importance, so this will also be protected during construction. You can see our, our grading stayed away for it so that, that, um, so it wouldn't be any filled place on top of that tree's root structure. The septic system is designed, minimum requirements for the Putnam County Health Department is two bedrooms. It is just a one-bedroom addition, so there'll be double the capacity needed as a minimum requirement for a septic design. And also, as David had mentioned, I've been in discussions with them since we did soil testing approximately two months ago, and they've been, they've been on board with our designs, scheme, and methodology. And as David had mentioned, it was, it was recommended by them early on in the project that this would be the simplest approach and would lead to the least amount of disturbance to mitigate any stormwater runoff by the increase in impervious air from the addition. We are roading the roof leaders to a underground retention system here. And it'll consist of two rows of 30-litre feet of cul-de-sac chambers completely underground. It'd be a high-level overflow grade just in case for an extreme storm. But the system is designed to infiltrate a 25-year design storm and also have no increase in peak rate or volume of runoff from the property that the existing conditions have. Rose and controls are shown here in the form of a silt fence to protect any downgrading properties. In this case, Traverse Corner Road and Old Albany Post Road during construction. 100% reserved septic area is shown here. This will not be installed, but it is required by the health department that if this system were to fail by any chance, that there is room for 100% compliance system to be installed. That would be able to happen. Total stockpile area is shown here, and that'll be used when the basement area is excavated. But as David had mentioned, we will be balancing cut and fill on the site. I'm not sure if any of you have been out to the site, but there is a low spot here on the property that has signs of water pooling there, just by discoloration along compared to other portions of the property. So we'll be filling this area and creating a more more consistent drainage path. Drainage currently does come down along this way, following the contours down towards the low spot over here. So we won't be changing any drainage paths. We will just simply be improving them while also minimizing or eliminating any soil having to be removed from the property. There will be a small basement space, about half the size of the addition shown here. And we will be using a sump pump to to alleviate those footing drains. That'll be discharged here over a riprap outlet. Soil testing was done in the area of the addition, and it did not hit any groundwater at the depth of the basement, so we don't anticipate that this will see water consistently or very often. So it's just a secondary measure just in case. That pretty much wraps up my site plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Harry. Do we have any, I tell you what, let's go to comments from the board, and then we'll go to Ron, and, or, and then we'll take up the public hearing. Any comments from the board? Peter?
Hi, since I missed the site, and I think Harry actually just addressed it, but I just wanted to make sure that that weeping tree, I think it might be a peach. I'm not sure if it's a willow or not, is not going to be taken down in the process of.
I can, I can confirm that it will not be taken down. It's one of the reasons we, Heidi and I bought the house in the first place. And Ian Kingsley has been taking care of it of late. And, you know, he will continue to take care of it, so we hope it lasts for generations.
Great, thanks very much.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks. Yeah, Ian, Ian does some nice work. Anybody else before we go to the public? Steve?
Just for the applicant's engineer. I, I don't know why, but I was under the impression that that breezeway was going to be a completely enclosed hallway between the two structures. It looks like it's an open breezeway between two independent dwellings. Am I reading the plans right?
That is correct. It is a, an open breezeway with a roof. And as such. And, uh, as such, uh, it, that is, it is still an addition to the house.
All right. I'm not suggesting that you're wrong, but if you could provide a, a brief memo to the board for next meeting, just explaining how a second dwelling connected by a breezeway constitutes an addition to an existing dwelling as opposed to two single-family homes on a single lot.
Uh, well, I can, if you refer to the, your tenant, uh, building official who called it an addition as well as per the New York Building Code, um, it, it qualifies as an addition.
The building inspector may have said something that, that doesn't buy into the planning board. And the building code does have certain provisions regarding connecting individual structures and calling them, um, you know, uh, an addition, but that isn't the same thing as the, the, uh, town code uh, in regard to construction. So I mean, if there's nothing in it, it's not a problem. That would be great. It's just an issue that I'd like to put to bed. So if you could just, it doesn't have to be lengthy, just send an email or something like that, explain your position. It would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Any other, any other comments from the board? I would, I'd just like to add, Harry, um, Harry, you are, I mean, if you look at your existing well and you look at your hundred circles circumference, or the circumference, a hundred feet, getting very close. I'm sure that, I'm sure that hasn't escaped you, but, um, we have to see how the Putnam County Board of Health weighs in on that. It's close. It's real close. So can we, uh, I guess we'll go to the public hearing.
I have a question.
Sure, Kim, absolutely.
Um, so actually two questions. One question is, um, something that's also on Ron's memo. What is the, um, structure that's marked on the plans that says cottage?
Chris, do you want to answer that?
I, I, I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with the reference to cottage, but.
So on the, the, maybe Ron knows the document, the drawing number, but on the drawing.
Southwest.
There's an outhouse, an outhouse and a cottage. And we're curious.
Oh. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, I can't really speak to the origin of it, um, or whether Pat King and David, um, built the, what I would call a shed on the, um, property. But, um, it's, it predates possibly even them. I don't really know.
So there are two existing.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a shed that's, that was also on the property when we purchased the property that's to the west, um, which is next to our propane, one of our propane tanks. And then there's a shed that's to the south. And we, you know, just keep like the pool furniture and that kind of thing.
Okay. So I think, um, Ron's memo mentions that, um, something about distance, maybe, um, sorry. It says if the existing outhouse showing can be moved, it should be relocated to be outside of the required rear yard setback. So that is just something for Mr. Spence.
Okay. So there's the, the outhouse, which I'm, I don't, I'm not even sure what the vintage of, of it is, but, um, is it, is it, I mean, we bought the property with an outhouse that was, I don't know, it's probably dates back to the twenties or thirties. I have no idea, but.
Existing, in other words. So you're just saying.
Oh, yeah.
So we're not worrying about that. Okay.
No one's using any outhouses on the.
Yeah, no, no worry about that. So two more questions. Um, in the drawing of the new addition, there's, the basement has windows?
No.
No. What, what are those, um, the things that look like windows?
Can you tell me what drawing sheet, your number, what number drawing you're looking at?
It's a, it's one that should, I think there's only one that shows, it's like a section of the basement.
L three, L three point zero zero.
Yeah. So there, there are two squares in the center at the basement level.
Right. Um, just, oh, sorry, bear with me one second. Oh, those, those, that's just crawl space access.
Okay. All right, good. And then the only other question I have is, um, in the overhead plan for the addition, I see a long counter and then a shorter counter. Is there going to be a kitchen in there?
No, not to, not, not in the formal sense. The kitchen is up in the, uh, in the main part of the house, the yellow house.
Just wondering what those are.
They are counters, uh, uh, you know, it probably have a beverage cooler for sodas and drinks. Something like that.
Okay. Just want to know what it was. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Anybody else want to weigh in? Will we open it to the public? Cheryl? We don't have anybody. No?
I don't see any hands up at the moment.
Okay. All right. Thanks. So Ron, um, so we've got them signed off. Uh, seems like Hudson Highlands is signed off. They're okay with the project. Board of Health is acknowledging it again. They seem to be with them in spirit. We do have to wait for an approval. What are our options now?
Again, it's just a matter for the board. And once you close the public hearing, uh, to make a decision whether you're prepared to have me prepare resolutions for the next meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second?
Heidi seconded.
Heidi, thank you. And all in favor? Aye, I vote aye. So Ron, can we, can we, um, ask you to, I mean, our Ron or Steve, are we in a position where we can ask the, where we can prepare a resolution pending Board of Health approval?
Yeah, that's a very typical condition of approval for the board on any, any action.
Okay. All right. Are we, can we go, um, are we ready to vote on that then? Could I get a motion to have Ron prepare a resolution to approve pending Board of Health approval?
I'll make that motion.
Kim, thanks. Second? Thank you, Laura. All in favor? Aye, 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 I vote aye. Okay, good. And so, so move, Ron, prepare the, uh, approval for the next meeting pending Board of Health approval.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. You done, Ron Neil?
I think we're good. Thank you, Neil.
Good. Thank you. All right.
Can, can I just say one thing, Neil, is if it, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I just, um, having been at this for a year, I, and not knowing all the machinations and I've said before, my dad was on planning and zoning in Redding, Connecticut, but you know, I, I don't know what all the, the new, the, the references are to pending approval and stuff. Can I just get some layman's terms on where we stand, if I may?
Uh, well, Chris, we, we've essentially approved your application pending the approval of your septic.
Well, no, that's, that's not quite true.
Okay. You're right. All right.
What, what's, what's, what's happened is the board has directed its engineer to prepare approval resolutions to be considered at next month's meeting. Those approval resolutions will have a number of conditions in them. One of the conditions would be O H approval. If the board, I fully expect it will, but still, if the board votes to adopt that resolution at next month's meeting, you'll have your approval subject to submitting finalized plans to be signed.
Okay.
And, and, and the letter, and, and the letter from Mr. Spence about the breezeway, Steve also, correct?
Oh, I, I don't think it's an issue, Neil. I just want to put it to bed so that it's not something hanging out there. If, you know, it turns out that it's a big issue, we'll revisit it next month in, in regard to, you know.
Well.
But I really don't expect it will be.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you for the, thanks for the clarity. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, it's all right. Um, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll put it back over to Mr. Zuckerman. Neil, you with us? You know, it.
Here he comes.
Here he comes.
Oh, okay. This refusal thing is a lot of fun. Are we ready now?
We are.
Oh, okay. God bless. All right. Let's, let's move on to River View Industries and I continue to pre, to applaud the gentleman who named it such. So, uh, so you get a little bit of fun in this job. Okay. So, uh, Ron, we have Mr. Watson and Glenn, thanks for your note. I'm sorry you couldn't be with us last week, but, uh, Jason, Jason did a nice job in your absence. So Ron, once you tell us where we are, please summarize your, your, uh, your note, please.
At the last meeting, at the main meeting, you, uh, were reviewing the part two EAF that was provided for the board. You were in the, uh, and going through that review, you had numerous questions that you were seeking from the applicant's consultant. I see that Glenn is here. I think any, any of those questions that remain should be directed to Glenn. So you can attempt to put them to bed and you can conclude your review on the, uh, part two EAF.
Glenn, I know you sent us a letter which I've read, I, to my colleagues have read, if, if for the, the purpose of the record, if you just want to highlight the main points of what, uh, you address, that would be helpful. When can you hear me? Okay.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm here. I can, um, oh, we, we got a list of the questions that you had. We've answered as many as we can at this, at this time. We, there was a question, the EAF that question, why we, why we asked, why we checked that a special use permit was required and I think technically that was an error, but as Ron had pointed out, it did call the attention to the need for site plan approval. So, that was, that was a technical error and my, my part. There was a question with regard to storage of fertilizers and spill kits. I mean, stir fertilizers on the site and, and that's just not going to happen. My letter explains that. The spill kits were, were another question. Spill kits, um, are, are air watertight, you just plastic drums that need to be kept on the site, need to be kept. They need to be kept accessible, uh, and easily acceptable. And inside those kits, there are things like, uh, small dykes that you can lay out to, to contain the flow of, say, a spill of some sort. Drying materials, rigs, all kinds of things to, to help minimize the damage of, should a spill occur. We have specified a tool be kept on site. They are, um, and, and, and they're really necessary for this, this particular application. So, uh, I don't, I don't know what this, I just have, it would be irresponsible from my perspective to, uh, specify otherwise or to not have them or to make them less visible and, 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 and more difficult to get to. And we have, we have, uh, most of this stuff, we, we will, we're agreeable to revising the plans to, uh, we have to specify dumpsters will be covered. We'll revise the site plan to specifically state which, which, um, which, uh, I'm just, we just, uh, just might found myself up here. That they will, will, will specify that they will be covered. The landscaping and site design, uh, there was a question with regard to that. It really just boiled a bit down to realizing you have to read, you have to read the plans in separate pages and sort of put them together in your head. If we, if we put everything on a plan as we use, that used to be back many years ago. Today's plans just won't tolerate that. So the landscaping doesn't show on every plan. It shows on the landscaping sheet. It is carried forward. It is there. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's part of the plan and part of hopefully your eventual approval. In particular, there's 26 spruces, uh, spaced out so that they're, when they grow, they'll fill in and form a screen in front of the activities on the site so that passersby will really not see vert, uh, as, uh, as they go by. There's a planting schedule. Uh, my letter explains how to read that planting schedule in some detail. The required setbacks, uh, I, I think the question at that point was, uh, with your setback for sto, storage, there is, we meet it. Uh, there was one corner of the parking area where it was too close. And we will perfectly agreeable to moving that forward so that, uh, so that, that question of the storage will, will not be an issue from a point of view of setbacks. What else did we have? I'm kind of looking at this. The outdoor lighting was another question. We, we're not planning any outdoor lighting, so it's not on a plan. This is a daytime operation. It's not going to be used or visited at night. Uh, we have foiled the, um, accident records from the state. They have not come through. The one accident that we know of in most recent past, uh, was an accident where, uh, a passing by truck hit a, it, it hit a, um, a mowing machine, uh, you know, the state was mowing the side of the road and that a truck hit it. At least that's, that's what I was told by the owner and, uh, I think Jason knew more about it than I do. So he explained that to me. So we've, we've gone through the, um, the, the EAF and, and I mean, the, the site plan. Looked at all of those things and, um, have no problem addressing them as we did. Soon as the accident records come in, we'll give, we'll certainly turn them in. You also, there was also a concern with regard to the site distances. We've, we've completed the site distance, um, evaluations for the site distances, north and south, both the, um, intersection site distances and the stopping site distances. There's, um, they're about 640 feet generally. Uh, you were, those are on plans that we submitted. The place that we chose was chosen because of its, it, it maximum, it, it's the best combination that we can come up with. You'll see they're nearly equal. There is about as good as that site can get. But they're, they're clear of any property lines. Uh, you can see on the plan and profile sheets that we sent in that, that, um, that we were not encroaching on anybody's property to achieve those sight lines. We can either do it on our own property where we have the right to clear or on state property, which is routinely mowed and, and can be, and can be kept clear for that purpose. I, I want to point out in that particular case, we have a difficult situation. That's been a difficult situation for many years and it, it's not the ideal, it's not the ideal piece of property, but it's been a piece of property for a long time. And what we tried to do was I was choose the best place for the intersection and put in the controls that will be necessary to keep the, the trucks from being scattered near the front or parked near the front of the site where they interfere with site distances, whether, whether, um, they're, uh, unsightly and the, and it's a pretty well, well-known and easy fact that if you have four, if you have six places or eight places or 10 places where a car can pull out onto the road instead of one, which is where, where we're going with this. It's a much safer situation. So we're hoping that you will see it that way. Uh, and we then provided, there will, we provided drainage along the road, which will discourage vehicles from violating the entry point. And then behind that, there is the. vehicles from violating the entry point. And then behind that, there is the landscaping, which is on a berm that will make it a difficult, just because it's a berm and quite impossible when the trees are, are, are planted and, and, and begin to mature so that, so that there will be one controlled access point in the best place available on the site. That's what we tried to accomplish. I think we did accomplish that. We sent the application into the state. Today, it's a three-part application. The first part is what we sent in. We're not allowed to submit the second part until after they've looked at the first part and we haven't heard back from them. So that's a review of what we've done. You have your comments from the Conservation Board. I'm, you'll see them. To schedule a public hearing for next month on this project. It's been here a long time. It's been a lot of work done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Glenn. Uh, so Ron, your note states obviously that tonight's in part to accept the EF part two at this point. I also wanted to submit that the last conversation where we asked Max Garfinkel of the Conservation Board to join us tonight. He is traveling in the wilds of Colorado and can't join us, but we do have his letter and I hope everyone has read it. I will read the operating point, which is the Conservation Board would like to convey that, that they are satisfied with the changes to the site plan pending the inclusion of an official means agreement, which, which Glenn was talking about pertaining to the oil separator. And once we close SEACRA and make our determination, they will vote to issue the wetlands permit. Glenn, I know that was a big topic of conversation, but there were others. Laura, Laura has mentioned traffic a couple of times. So I, I, our purpose tonight, Ron, is to, I believe, adopt the EF part two.
Yeah, correct. If, if the boards are disposed.
So, uh,
Well, let me say this, if I may, Neil.
Yeah, Ron, excuse me.
If the board wants to accept the AF part two, of course, the board is free to do that. And in fact, it's in many planning boards, common practice to conclude SEACRA before holding the public hearing. However, the practice of the Phillips Town Planning Board has generally been to hold the public hearing and then to conclude its SEACRA responsibility.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say we were gonna, we were gonna vote on what the determination was. I just said we'd accept the EF part two.
Um, and you're free to do that. Like I said, usually we do both at once, but if the board's pleasure is to accept the AF part two now, that's, that's fine.
I, I'm fine, I'm fine. I think is we're doing in the other, as we'll be doing in a couple of applications. Sorry, the train is in the station here. It's a loud in the background. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna accept the EF part two or debate and discuss it and accept it. And then we're gonna have a public hearing. And then we're gonna vote on our determination, which would be the process we're gonna go in with Shakespeare tonight. So.
That's my pleasure. That's fine.
So if, if, but I'm not suggesting we, I'm ready to do that if people have further comments on the EF part two, which was submitted not in this month, but the previous month. So I'm open to the further conversation with the board members to discuss the part two. That does not then provide our, our determination of significance. And I'm happy to delay that determination, that, that EF part two acceptance until the, after the, the public hearing. So I don't know what folks, what folks want to do, but someone must take questions and comments if anyone has on what Glenn said first. Does any questions for Glenn? Kim, go ahead, please. Kim, you're on mute.
Sorry. So this is a failing on my part, but I have a really hard time understanding these site distance surveys. And I was just wondering, you know, like these drawings that show us, you know, where a car is traveling and whatever. I was just wondering if maybe it would be possible for Glenn to share his screen and just walk us through one of them so that I get a, and I, cause I don't, I just, it's hard for me to visualize what's going on with these cars and what this red line means and stuff. And I know that might be difficult for the public as well.
Oh, give me a second. I'll try to get it up here. Screen, I'm gonna share my screen. That's okay. It's this one.
Thanks. I know this is more difficult because we're on Zoom if we were in a building and.
The, yeah, do you, just, you see it now?
Yeah.
The drawing?
Yep.
Okay. Well, in a nutshell, the site distance is when a car is either leaving of, on the right-hand edge of the screen, is either leaving a place, going north or south, or when a car is approaching a place, going, in this case, south. When does he see the other car? How far away does he see the other car and have an opportunity to make a judgment as to whether or not he has to put on the brakes or whether or not he has, can just keep going. So the measurement for that is called the site distance, called the site distance. Obviously, if the site distance were 15 feet and you came around a blind turn, you even see, you know, road signs and some of our, some of our roads, blind turn. It basically means watch out. Somebody could come out of a driveway and you're gonna hit them if you don't go slow. So as that distance increases from the 15 feet, my example, to the 640 feet we have here, it increases the amount of reaction time that a person has in order to stop his car and avoid an accident. So there's two elements to that. The top element is a plan view. When, and you've all been doing this long enough to know that you're looking, you plan view, you're looking down from, from above the property and you need to see what the size distance is. This site distance is, is controlled by a couple of different things. It's vegetation, it's property lines, probably some other things that I'm not thinking about right this second. But if you go right here and you see my cursor just to the, just below and slightly to the left of the US Route nine label. You see it's crossing right at the corner of the property. So anything behind and to the left of that property, of, of that property line, anything further from the road and to the left of that property line is not controllable by either Mr. Reichardt in this case or by the state because it's on private property. So if someone were to put a a blue spruce like we're proposing over here, right in this corner, and it were to grow up, we couldn't do anything about it. So all of a sudden, were we to position that line back to go through the neighbor's property, we would be cutting off our, we, we had the potential to cut off our site distance. Of course, we could get an easement for that. But what we did was look at the site distance where we're, where the, where we were looking over pro- our private property, in this case, over the, the drainage ditch past the corner to see how far we could get and stay on the right of way across the street to where we, we, we could see a car approaching. And we measured that distance. That's one element. The other element is to turn it on its side and look at it sideways because if, looking at it, I keep trying to point to the thing with my finger. I know you can't. So the, you, this plan view doesn't tell you if there's a bump or a hill or something in the road that would get in the way vertically. So this lower plot shows you, this lower red line shows you a red line from the eye of the, in this right ed, the right end. The eye of the driver of the car stopped to come out of the driveway to the front of the, to the, on the left side to the car, to the front of the car, approaching, approaching the property. And the line below it shows you that I'm tracing with the cursor now is this ground surface either as it exists today, this upper dashed line, or as it will exist when the grading is done on the site. So, so in no case are, are we trying to go through ground. We're going over the ground. Sometimes when you, when you drew this plan very nicely and then you come down here, the ground goes up and it forms a hill and you can't see over it. So we look at it from two different ways. Then to see if we have the site distance and from our, based on our survey measurements and, 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 and taking information off the map, we believe that we have 640 feet of site distance, in this case, on each, on each side of it. And I know John Canning is listening and he better not make a liar out of me. So I hope that I'd be happy to answer any questions if I'm able, but that's, I hope, I hope that's responsive.
Thank you. That is really helpful.
Other questions? At least on this topic, Laura, go ahead.
So at least on this topic. So if I understand correctly, we do not have a traffic study, correct?
That's correct.
And when are we supposed to get that?
Well, you haven't asked for one and I, I don't, to be perfectly frank, I don't see the need for one. We, it's, we're, we're locked into one position that will work on this site. And we're entitled to a, to a driveway permit and we can, we can provide the site distance.
Uh, I, I understand that. And I guess what I'm trying to get a better understanding on is how the site is actually going to be used. I think in our last meeting, we discussed the fact that the, the lot that is in question is a parking lot for the equipment that they're repairing. And in order for them to do the work, they have to move the material and the trucks from that lot across Route nine into the area where they're going to repair it. And so what we're trying to get a better understanding is it's not so much about trucks coming in and out of the parking lot as opposed to how they're actually going to be operating their operations. So when they're moving a broken truck from one side to the other, one, are they going to use flagmen? Two, if they have trucks parked along the shoulder, which they do today, because I pass it every day. And then when you do that and you cross trucks across the way, my question is how are they going to navigate that? So I guess I'm just trying to understand the frequency of the traffic that's going back and forth and understanding how they're going to operate and be able to maintain their operations in that case.
Okay, that's a fair enough question. And I, I don't see that as exactly as a traffic study, but we can certainly look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Others? Anyone? Glenn, can you take down your, your image, please, and see everyone's faces?
I'm finished. You can.
Just un, just unshare. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, other questions for Glenn? So, so folks, look, the way I see this, this situation is that we've got a use for a long time that was in violation. We're trying to clean up the use. And so it's a use that is not changing from what I gather. It is the same use it was before. It was just not well-kept. And our, the big issue that we've talked about, at least my big issue has been, and I think is why Heidi in our last meeting asked to go see it again, because the site itself was distressing in terms of leakages and the like. And so the fact that Max has come back, which is our, at least the big issue we talked about last time, and said that the Conservation Board is comfortable with the oil separator and other measures to provide a wetlands permit, gives me, gives me comfort that we are not extending the use. In fact, we're doing what we're, to use the, the, the doctor's phrase, we're not only not doing harm, we're actually doing some good to improve the quality of this site. I think Laura asked some very good questions about whether we're actually making it better and safer in terms of its Route nine-ness, I'll use that as a phrase. And I think as, as Heidi was very active and thoughtful about when we did SEACRS, I think we have an emerging and a continuous, and we'll talk about this in our next topic, an increase of Route nine usage in building after building, which is becoming, I think, noticeable to all of us on this board and maybe members of the public. And that is not an editorial remark. That is just an observation and a factual one of that. So I, 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 I feel comfortable holding a public hearing in our next meeting to gather the views of the public. I think that allows Glenn some time to do the, the analysis or the commentary that Laura's requesting, which as he said, is reasonable. But I'd like to go ahead and get a, get a public hearing going, in my opinion, to continue the movement of this. To Glenn's point, we have been talking about it for some time. I'd like to get some, some, some forward progress. So I, I, I'm happy to take a motion and get a second and debate whether we should do that and then take a vote. That's okay. Do you have a procedural opposite? Uh, procedural opposition, that's Steve or Ron? Are we okay on, we're okay with that?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
The only other issue, Neil, was the acceptance of the EAF, whether you want to do that now or later.
Well, my guess is, given Laura's raised a question, and I would say that since it was not sent around in the packets, I'm not sure folks are ready to vote on the EF part or to accept the PF part two. It's my guess. And Cheryl, we need to make sure, because we could probably do it next time also, to get that sent around again to the board, because it was not in this month's packet. And I think that's, I mean, I think people need to review it to be able to vote on it again. But I think to Glenn's point, his ask, as well as Ron's note, getting this public hearing scheduled and on the docket for next time is an important milestone. So let's first cover that one. Kim, Kim gave me a motion. Anyone second to schedule the public hearing for, for review? Peter seconded. Okay, any discussion of that? Heidi, go ahead, please.
So my question is, um, is, and this is just reflects the fact that I have only been, have only been on the planning board for, I guess, a year now, but this is the first time we've had a project like this where it's such a mess just visually. And I'm just wondering, is, is it ever possible to say to the applicant, why don't you fix it? Why don't you show us what it's going to look like fixed before we have to take further steps? Like, uh, just, I know that there, there's supposedly going to be a maintenance plan, but, um, I mean, what, it's hard to imagine what this is going to look like better. And, and I, and I just worry that, uh, that it's just premature to have even a hearing because, um, without knowing, without people being able to know whether this is going to continue to be a horrible eyesore, how do, how do people judge whether it makes sense to approve it or not? It's just a, it's really just a question. Maybe, maybe everything has to happen prior to the approval because why would, because maybe the applicant wouldn't bother tidying it up and fixing it unless they get the approval. But I would have thought that they have to show in good faith that what they, what their plan is, rather than just leave it a nasty mess. And then we just keep going.
Glenn, you raised your hand a couple of times. Go ahead, Glenn.
Well, I mean, the fact is that anything to improve the situation requires site plan approval. So if we don't apply for and get site plan approval, we're putting us deeper in the hole with regard to the zoning law. In this particular case, I think I've said this to you before, Mr. Reichert, who is the owner of Riverview Industries, is before the town court and has been told that he will get site plan approval and he must prosecute an application for it. So the idea of, of making the improvements first is contradictory to the, to the zoning law.
Well, what I, what I heard Heidi though asking was, you were asking about a visual representation. Is that what you mean, Heidi?
Yeah, just like.
Don't, don't we have that in one of the many plats and drawings? Glenn, do we not have a mock-up of what it will look like with the spruce and with the parking slots, et cetera?
Yes, you do. It's in the site plan set. I mean, it's not, you don't have a rendered one, but you have a site plan set.
So if Heidi would a rendering, meaning a three, not three-dimensional, but a vertical one, be, be something that you'd like to see? Would that be helpful?
I guess so. There's just, to me, there's just an illogic to them not even taking steps to tidy up and to make it look better. Even, I'm not talking about building the, you know, that type of wall that they're gonna build and that sort of thing, the, the actual infrastructural changes, but just to improve the appearance while we're, while we have this thing on, under consideration, because it just seems like, why wouldn't the public say to us, how could you approve something that looks like this? How could you even consider? And then I guess our response is, well, after we approve it, they're gonna fix it up. But it, that seems a little counterintuitive to me. And maybe that's just how it works, but it, it seems a little counterintuitive.
I guess I, I'm, I'm not trying to be an apologist for the applicant in any way. I will, I will, I'll make two comments. One, you should have seen it before, I guess I'd say. When we did our first site visit, my colleagues and I recall a much more dilapidated situation. So I agree with you. It's not pretty. And the second non-apologist comment is in, in some ways, they are running a business. And I, I don't know how to, if you're, if you're asking, do we approve it? Do we, as a condition, a cleanup? Do we, as a condition, a cleanup of the place so they can get in this separator, all the equipment, and that means cleaning it out? I, I, the last time, I think we had something similar to that, and it wasn't Glenn, it was Patty Smith, I believe, when we dealt with, um, um, R O D A C a long time ago. And Kim was, was on the board, because she's been on longer than I, but none of you, none, none of the rest of the board members were there. Maybe, maybe Ron recalls our site visit to R O D A C. But I recall it being not terribly much better in the post-clean-up mode before we approved it. They had done a job, but I, but it's, it's a worthy conversation. I'll maybe turn to Steve and Ron to see if Heidi's request for basically, you know, do a broom sweep before we approve it, I guess is what she's suggesting.
Can I just say something? So I don't think that what we're talking about in terms of, like, the violation isn't an aesthetic violation. The violation is that he's, that, you know, that there's no, there's a bunch of stuff with no parking and things have to come in and out and it's overflowed and stuff like that, but I, I don't believe our zoning, correct me if I'm right, Steve, has aesthetic criteria in it. I, I believe that, you know, we don't have a historic, we don't have a historic district, we don't have a historic review board, things like that. So I don't know, I mean, I, you know, maybe you can speak to that, Steve.
That could be considered in secret review as far as that sort of thing goes. But in terms of saying the applicant, you need to clean up your site. I'm, I'm not even sure exactly what that means, to be honest with you. But, um, to tell them that they have to take some, some physical action on the site before the board will grant their application is something this board just doesn't have jurisdiction to do. Um, you're a permitting board, not an enforcement board. So you can't say move the oil drums or, you know, relocate the cars or something before we'll, before we'll approve. What you can do is impose conditions, as long as they're reasonably related to whatever the change that's being proposed in the site plan amendment or, in this case, I guess initial site plan approval, but pre-existing. So, uh, but what, in any event, in, in regard to the change that's proposed in the project. And that can extend to things like screening, um, stacking of boxes or moving of parked vehicles or something is a little bit more distanced from this type of approval. If you'd wanted to, uh, if it was pertaining to, for example, the other side of the road that they want to park things on, insist upon there being demarked parking spaces, parking being limited to that, and that being a certain distance away from the roadway, so that isn't, that's the type of condition you could impose. But the business of this kind of vague cleaning up the site or general cleaning up the site, I, I don't think is something that the board's going to be in a position to get into. Um, you know, in granting an approval or, or saying, you know, we need this before we hold a public hearing.
Well, we, 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 we have a motion on the table. Uh, it's been seconded. We have Heidi's comment about cleaning up before a public hearing. Any other comments about this particular matter of the public hearing? Okay, can I call for a vote then, please? All in favor, say aye.
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 I vote aye, all opposed, extensions. Okay, so we're going to schedule the public hearing, Cheryl, for our next, next meeting. Um, Glenn, so that's, that's, that's taken care of. Glenn, if you would, uh, be so kind to start producing what Laura has asked for, I think that'd be a useful conversation. And depending on the, the busyness of our next meeting, given that we're taking an August recess, I'd be happy to find a way to also engage in that conversation following the public hearing, uh, in that same meeting.
Thank you. Yes, so, take care.
Okay, anybody, any other issues on this, on, uh, on River View this evening? And then, so let's just make sure, Cheryl, we get that E A F out, everyone, for the next, uh, meeting as well. All right, want to spend a little time on that. All right, anything else on River View, folks? Okay, let's move to thirty-six. Twenty-two, Route nine. Ron, where are we with this, please?
There's the applicant sharing a screen. The, uh, the applicant has been before the board for a variety of occasions. Most recently, they've been attempting to address, uh, the visual impacts of the size of the building. As the board may recall, they've reduced the size of the front building now. They've modified its location slightly. They recognize the need to get D O T approval for the new access points. Uh, they've been seeking, uh, having the board schedule a public hearing, so they can continue to move the project forward. Um, the, uh, the, uh, E A F part two was, again, previously provided to the board. Uh, the secret determination has not yet been made. But as I say, if the board is now satisfied with the latest plans and that, given you now new renderings to better illustrate the aesthetic impact of the project along the corridor, uh, the board may be prepared to schedule a public hearing.
And thank, thank you, Ron. Steve, anything to add? So thi- this E A F part two was also not sent in our package this month, but it was submitted in May. And the only topic which was, uh, a large impact was traffic, which there was a study submitted. And lo and behold, the study said it would not have impact, given the size of Route nine, which is usually what, what happens with Route nine, uh, studies, as we've come to learn. Um, so I would be inclined to, uh, accept the E A F part two at this point, uh, given that I think it's a limited number of topics related to this one, but I'm also open to delaying that as well. So I don't know how people feel about accepting the E A F part two this evening.
So, um, so accepting the, the A F part two, because they've marked traffic as a potentially large impact, the, um, questions that Ron has about, um, what kind of traffic they're going to study would, um, not be affected, right?
Well, we have the traffic study.
Well, no, the, the, Ron has said that this traffic study is, is talking about cars and it's not really talking about ser- service vehicles, trailers and the like, if you look at the second page of.
Yeah, the applicant will still be required to respond to those questions, Kim. And, uh, they'll still have to provide their further data, you know, to understand it before you make a secret determination.
But, but part two would not be changed, wouldn't be even, even larger impact is all, you can only go, you can't go largest.
Right, right.
Adam wasn't trying to make the light of it, sorry.
No problem.
But good question, Kim.
Okay. Um, I don't have any, um, problem with that. I, I do have quest, a couple of questions.
And we can certainly do that, okay. Other, let me, let's finish that topic on accepting the E A F part two tonight, and then we can go into people's technical questions. Neil Tomlin, do you want to say something? You look like you're, oh, you're just looking in a different direction, okay. Other com, any others on the E A F part two? We've gone through it. Anything, any questions? Okay, I, I'd like, I'd like to make them, so let's, let's come back to voting on it after we answer people's questions. So Kimmy, tell me you have questions on the application.
Yeah, so, um, so I have notes here that say that, um, the numbers aren't the same for, um, this, the square footage of the, the total square footage of the structures on the traffic study. Um, it's, comes out to be like twenty three, one twenty, and on the, um, S P one drawing, it's twenty-two, three, eighty. So I'm just wondering why that is.
Um, I'm sorry, which numbers are those?
So, um, sorry, it's because I took notes on a piece of paper and sort of on the document. Um, so on the traffic study, you have two buildings, eleven, six, twenty and ten, five hundred, right?
Yes.
And then, and that adds up to twenty-three, one twenty square feet. And on the drawing that's labeled S P one layout and landscape, you have a combined total of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty, which is, you know, it's about two hundred and sixty, well, a thousand, two hundred and sixty square feet larger, so. Or, um, I'm sorry, it's smaller, I take that, my brain isn't working tonight. I'm just wondering why they're not the same number.
They, they should be the same. The, the number that's referenced in the traffic study is, is correct. If, um, if you, I, I think I'm sharing the S P one right now. You've got a, a, a ten thousand, five hundred and an eleven thousand, six, twenty. And that is, that's what I, I believe was, what the traffic study was based on.
So that's a large nervous, that's great. Um, okay, so the only, the other question I have is about the rendering. I'm trying to understand what this rendering is showing us. Um, I thought if you could put it up on the screen, um, just so I can ask you what the materials are.
Are you seeing it now?
Nope.
Oh, all right, let me just adjust my share. How's that?
Oh, great, okay. So I seem to remember that we talked about Hardy plank in the past. Is that right?
It's, it's actually, um, Hardy board and button.
Yeah, and so is that the, the upright white colored?
Correct.
Yeah, and is that going to be white?
No, it's actually, I, I mean, I think what he's showing you is a black and white version of, um, the colored elevations, but.
Oh, I see, within a blue sky.
It, um, it might be helpful if I jump into, um, you know, this is Keith of L M B, the architecture. It'll probably be helpful for me to jump into the rendering. So we used, uh, we used the renderings from Keith's office to put that, I'm sorry, the, the elevations from Keith's office to put that rendering together. And, uh, you'll, the board will recall that, um, there were color and material swatches on, uh, on Keith's plans here.
Right, but none of those are Hardy plank. So, um, what color is the Hardy plank going to be?
No, the Hardy is.
Oh, there, it's further up, okay, so it's gray.
The front building has a gray, correct.
Okay, cool. And the, the big upright veneer over the doors, that's the brick?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, so it's basically going to be gray, black, white and kind of a grayish brick color?
Yeah, it's, it's a slightly darker gray, it's not charcoal-ish, but it's.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just trying to understand, because it looks, in that rendering that you did, it looks like it's, you know, solid aluminum.
It's, it's a little, yeah, it, the color-wise, it might be a little washed out.
Yeah, okay, good, I just want to know what I'm looking at. Um, and then, uh, I think that's it. I'm glad to see a little more landscaping on the side of the building, thank you. Um, I do, oh, I did want to know, um, because I don't think we ever really established this. There's a, a right-of-way at the north end of the drive, of the, the lot, that's a, a shared, shared right-of-way with the lot next door. Is that being extinguished?
It is not planned to extinguish that, that is, um, it's not a right-of-way, it's a, it's a reciprocal access easement.
An access easement.
And that, that is not, um, currently contemplated to be extinguished. Uh, we are not, uh, putting any improvements, uh, in that area. Um, it's not something that's been discussed, uh, to my knowledge.
Okay, so, you know, at some point when the, um, the lot next door gets built, um, that could be another driveway, correct? Since it's an access easement.
The, it's a reciprocal easement between the lots, so I, I believe theoretically, there could be access through one lot into the other. Um, but, you know, certainly, you know, any, anything, any improvements that were to be contemplated on the other lot would have to go through an approval process. And, uh, I, I don't think, to my knowledge, there's no thought given to using that easement.
Okay, good, all right, so that's, um, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Others? Okay, so I'll just add one, which is Ron, Ron references, uh, one seventy-five, sixty-five delta, the, the paragraph, uh, which includes a number of topics to include screening. My, in my opinion, and Mr. Watson from previous work, and this is not one of his, but has known that I, particularly Magazino comes to mind, that I insisted on greater screening. The only, the only, I think, exception to the screening is if something is retail. It's clearly not retail, and at least from this drawing, I feel like, given the particularly large size of the building and height, I, at least from this rendering, I feel like there's a lot more screen that could be done. I'm looking, as I'm looking at this image you have, Adam, I can look right between these two sets of, um, you can't see, well, I'll, let me just annotate. Let me just, uh, see if I can do that in this technique. Uh, view options, it's not letting me do what I can do in my zoom at work, but there's a space between the two sets of pine-ish trees that are, uh, like, you know, the, the, the upper half of this side. And I can see the center of the big, thank you, exactly. There's a little gaping hole there. If you go to your right by two inches, uh, yeah, this, where the roadway is, I feel like you get up some more against the building. Uh, I just feel like there's, I think we got room to go.
Yeah.
In terms of screening, go ahead.
I, I, I would just, I would just respond and, and, um, a- at the same time, just respectfully push back. Uh, also, I, I received, um, Ron's memo a couple hours ago on, on one item there. And that was with regard to the, um, the maturity of the planting that's shown here. Um, you know, our, our typical practice is to, both in plan and in, uh, perspective renderings like this to show, you know, not the day they're put in the ground, but a year, two, three, from, from when they're, they're planted. Um, I think Ron suggested that this was a full maturity. Um, and, and this is certainly, that is certainly not, you know, this is much closer to the day that they're dropped in the hole than it is to full maturity. You know, we've got, uh, you know, these are, uh, on, on the plan are called out as sugar maples. Um, we've got some spruces, you know, these are things that are going to fill in. Uh, there's a limit to how much you want to, or how closely you want to put these types of, you know, the idea is we want to put trees that will, you know, increase in, in screening as we go. I think for a, an early phase of these having been planted, you know, this, this, this image kind of, uh, representing not long after planting, you know, we've got a good start, but we have to also provide a room for these things to grow in. Um, so we're happy to, you know, if, if we can find more room to, to put another, you know, a, a few more trees, um, we'll certainly look for those opportunities. Um, but we also have to just, you know, we, we have to, we've, we have to allow room for the, for the plantings to, to grow in. We've also made an effort to, uh, change out from previous versions of the plan, uh, from deciduous trees that will lose their leaves in the winter to evergreen, to have, uh, you know, a, a, the full year, uh, screen. So I, I, I totally understand your, your, your comment, but I think we just want to be wary of, of just jamming things in so that on the very first day, it's completely blocked, because those trees are going to die, because they're going to be too close together.
Certainly, certainly a fair point, uh, but from this layman's perspective, looks like there's a lot more building than there is screening. And so I'd like that you'd take a little, take a little more green thumb to it, uh, if you wouldn't.
Well, we'll look for where there's opportunities to do that.
Okay, other, any other comments? I'll give one more shot. Okay, all right, so I'd like to then come back to the topic of accepting the E A F part two at this point. Ron or Steve, you want to have any comments on that?
I think I'm prepared to respond to any questions the board might have, but otherwise, a matter for the board to act on.
Yeah.
Earlier, the board has the option of either adopting it now or accepting it now, I should say, or waiting to collapse the public hearing.
Um, I'm finding a way up to the public hearing if people would like another, another bite of the apple. Can I get a, let's just test this by seeing if I can get a motion to, uh, accept the E A F part two. Okay, people would like to wait, that's fine, and let's do that. Uh, can I get a motion to schedule the public hearing? Kim, Kim has, uh, made that motion a second. Okay, Laura, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Okay, Cheryl, we're going to have a second public hearing in our next meeting, uh, to cover, uh, three, six, two, two. Adam, Keith, we'll see you then. And, uh, we'll then, Cheryl, this will make sure the E A F part two is also sent around, so we can have that discussion. We'll see if we can get to that next, next month as well, before that. Folks, get ready for the long meeting next month. Um, not that they're not all long. Okay, and on to, uh, uh, our final item for the evening. Thank you, take care, gentlemen, thank you. Uh, let's, 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 uh, let's get into, um, the Shakespeare Festival. Give me one sec, please. Okay, and, uh, so let's see, it's nine oh two. Let's, let's, let's see if, I mean, after, by ten o'clock, we'll be at this two and a half hours. I'd love to see if we can accomplish our goals in the next hour-ish. I think that's possible. I'm not sure it's probable, but it's possible. The goal for this evening, uh, is to accept the E A F part two. Uh, I do have one. I do have one, one comment to make though, first, before we dive in. This board has received, as I said last time, as you saw in the minutes, many, many letters from different members of the public who have strong views in multiple directions about this project. There seems to be some confusion about two things related to this project. One is about the board's ability to respond to letters. And if members of the public who have said those things and are, have commented that they are, they are frustrated, that we have not responded them individually. We will not respond individually. We are not engaging in outside of public meetings debates about topics of this application. That is the purpose, in contravention of open meetings, is not the purpose of this board to engage in outside of meeting debates and discussions. We're here to talk publicly and openly, and I, as I think my tenure is showing, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible as we do this work. So we're not going to engage in debate about opinions or merits and demerits of the project. Second thing is, I will state this yet again. The EF part two is the board's work. It is our product. We accept it. The applicant writes it. Now, that seems odd to people, and I understand why that sounds odd, but that is how it happens. It is our work, meaning it is the, and I shouldn't even say the work. It is our document adopted by the board as the board's work. It is drafted by the applicant, and it is made, edited, and changes by the board. And I appreciate the applicant, what you have done and what is in the, the highlighted yellow, or your revisions to the EF part two as per our debate last time. I hope that satisfies the members of the public who continually ask about this topic. I hope I've been clear. I certainly hope I've been consistent. And Mr. Gava can tell me whether I've been consistent and whether I'm being factual. Thank you. I got a thumbs up from Steve Gava. That's good enough for me. And I hope that's good enough for the, for those members of the public who continually ask me email these same questions. I promise you, members of the public, we are reading all your notes, but we will not respond. We will engage in this conversation. I hope that long editorial remark will satisfy those members of public in their questions. And I see my friend Kim Connor, who feels the same way about those kind of emails. We are reading, but we are not responding. Okay. Purpose of tonight is to go through the EF part two as edited, and we appreciate it. Mr. House, any remarks you want to make?
No, I think I agree with your schedule for this evening. If we get through the part two and then move to the part three outline and do the best we can in the time you allow us. I want to thank, our full team is here tonight. I don't think I need to reintroduce everyone. We'll call on them as needed. But I want to thank AKRF for their very comprehensive memo that we got on the 15th. It helps us not only prepare for tonight, but as your board probably can assume, our team is working for the July 15th meeting already. And to have those comments helps us to jumpstart that process a little bit. And at that July 15th meeting, we fully intend to have comprehensive responses to all the points that we make in the part three outline. So that, that's our goal for tonight, and then to work towards next month. With regard to the AKRF memo, they, excuse me, there were comments on paragraph 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, and 24. And we hope to have Ally Patron be able to get in touch with Chris Robbins and Aaron to schedule a meeting to, you know, smooth over any of the differences we might have there, if any, over those points in anticipation for the July 15th meeting. And then finally, at the end, you know, we're prepared to be available to all the board and all the consultants during the period of time when the, the board is not in session for meetings between July 15th and September. And just at the end of the meeting, if we could hear what your expectations are for us for September, that's.
Yeah, I just wanted, one, one comment. I mean, we need to talk about this in subsequent. I think it'd be great if you're submitting all the studies that are tied to part three in July 15. I can't imagine you're going to have, present all those studies on July 15. And we will be here for many, many, many hours. So what would, besides submitting them and asking the board if they, to start having questions off them, what else were you hoping to accomplish on the 15th of July?
Well, we'll be a little short. We won't have the full dam study done. We won't have the full acoustical and the phase one EAS. We won't have that done by then, but we anticipate having nearly everything else finished for our July 1st submission in time for July 15.
So I, just to, just to set the, the, the context for the, for the next meeting, I think you, we, I would expect more of a tour for us of the materials of telling us what's there, since they will be publicly available, of course, as well. And so you can tell us what's there. I don't think it'll be a good use of time if you present everything in a public forum for all those studies. That would be, that would be, you know, a multi-day, almost like seeing the Wagner cycle all at once. That'd be, for that was for.
Well, we're available for special meetings at any time, too, if I know you're.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, the only one who's getting paid is you, Daniel, so I'm not sure I want him up for that. So, okay, but fine. All right, so let's do this. Here's the plan, folks. I've got in front of me the, the, the part two as edited by our, our friends. I also have our AKRF memo. They are aligned. They should be aligned. So we're going to go like we did last time through each of the chapters of the part two, starting with item, not surprisingly, number one, impact on land. I'm going to add, and you'll notice, and thank you, Dan, and your team, or maybe it was Jan who did this, for putting in yellow what the changes were. That's very helpful and very clean. Let's just go through it one by one, number one through number 18. I'm going to ask the board if they have any comments, if things are where they want. I'll ask AKRF to comment, because we, again, we have their comments, and each time it says this comment has been addressed or not addressed. And we'll just go through them. We'll just see if anyone on the board has any questions about the EF part two, and whether the boxes are in the right spot. Okay?
Jan will, Jan will answer anything about that. Do you want us to share a screen for anything? Is that helpful?
I don't, I, I, at least I don't, I'd like to see everyone's faces more than, than paper, unless, every board member, again, has this binder in front of them. And if you don't have it printed, we could put certainly AKRF's memo up, which was sent around. Do people want to see the AKRF memo in parallel, or people just find a look on their, at their desks? Anyone want it on screen?
I'd rather see people's faces.
Fine. Anyone else? Stick with the faces. I like the faces, too. It helps, it helps run the meeting. Okay, so we'll start with impact on land. And I don't see any changes on that item. Any comments on number one? We'll go board members, board first, Jan second, AKRF third, okay? Board members, any questions on number one? I'm going to just go stepwise with this. There's no rush, but we're going to go stepwise. Any comments, board members, on number one? Okay, Jan, anything?
No, Chairman.
AKRF? Chris?
We actually, Kristen, Kristen Ron can correct me, but in our memo, we actually were accepting all the part two as currently shown. We don't have any additional comments on part two. We do have some for part three.
Then I will not ask you again, because you'll just say that. Okay, item number two, impact and geological features. For members. Number two. Okay. Number three, impact and surface water. You'll see one, two places, plus another impact checked off by AKR, by, by the applicant under turbidity, soil erosion, and the other impact stormwater. Any comments? Everyone comfortable with that? Okay. Number four, groundwater. There's been obviously a, a comment added to the site source. Again, thank you, Jan, if you're the one who put this in yellow. Very helpful. That was great.
Got it.
Any, any comments on four? Again, no rush. Nothing on four. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, number five, impact on flooding. Let's see, the, the overall is a yes. Any comments on flooding, number five? Okay, number six, I don't believe there are any changes, but comments on six, on air. And again, board members, I'm happy to stop at any time. Just pause me. On air, going once. Okay.
Actually, uh.
Yeah.
Or, um, we did have a response to your collective questions last time about that particular question six. There was a question about what constitutes state regulated air emissions, and we did a little digging, and we, we have a response at the end of our memo that has some information there about what's considered trivial activities, what are exempt activities, you know, according to the chapter three of New York's, New York Code Regulations, six, New York Code Regulations, chapter three, which is air resources. There's links to all of it there. There's hyperlinks that I believe still work within the memo embedded. So we didn't, based on our review of the project, we don't see anything that would, you know, rise to a level of a state emission source or permitted emission source of this project. We just asked the applicant to just confirm that, you know, based on their review of those lists.
I can't remember to raise the question at the time, and maybe that person doesn't remember, but it's on page 10 of the AKRF memo. Oh, they want us to flip to it now, while we're on the top. Page 10. Thank you, Aaron, for raising that.
Yeah, I'd like to also point out that, that there were questions on, on, from the planning board, a request for additional information from the planning board, also on questions for impact of groundwater. And question nine, impacts to aesthetic resources. And at, on that same page, or at the end of, end of our memo, you will find our responses to, to your request for information on, on both of those questions. So I don't know if it's helpful for the, you, the board members to take a look at that at this point, or if they want to take a look at that after we're done.
Well, while, while we're, Chris, we're here, so why don't you guys just tell us what you found in both those, since we just, we skipped over this item, and I'm glad you're bringing us back. So what, what did you learn on groundwater, question four, and what did you learn on air, question six?
All right, so again, we're free to the end of our, our comment memo. On the groundwater piece, there are, the question had to do with what's a safe and sustainable withdrawal from a particular aquifer. And that's one of the notes in the, in the question. And if you take a look at our response, the, we've, we've broken it down into sort of three pieces. There's, there's information from both the New York State D E C and from the New York State Department of Health that guide the installation and use of groundwater supply wells. And we've provided links to both of those sort of guidance documents from, from the two state agencies. And then we go into talking a little bit about what's safe and what's sustainable. Quickly, on the sustainable side, generally what happens is there's no specific set withdrawal rate for any given aquifer. What, what typically happens is that an applicant will come in with a proposal to install advanced, a, a water supply well. And as part of that exercise, they will conduct a pump test, if you will. And during that test, which, which they draw, you know, whatever volume of water they think is, is available. And as part of that test, there'll be posimeters or sensors that are placed in wells nearby that will allow for the assessment of whether or not the drawing of water from the proposed well will impact, affect nearby wells. And, and that's determined by a drawdown, if you will, a lowering of the elevation of the water in, in nearby wells. If that is the case, then you have connectivity between those wells in the groundwater aquifer. And depending on the amount of, of drawdown, it could result in an impact where it would negatively affect the use of the other wells. If that's the case, there are remedies that can be implemented, including, you know, advancing wells that are affected further, right, making them deeper. There's hydrofracturing that allows more water to, to be drawn out of, of a particular well and the like. So that's the sustainable piece. On the, on the safe side of the safe and sustainable withdrawal, during the, the pump test, there'll be, sort of at, at the tail end, there'll be samples taken out of the water, groundwater that's pumped, and those will be sent to a lab. Those will be tested for potential constituents, pollutants, if you will. And if there's, if there are, if they are found present, the idea is to try to determine where they would come from. There's two things that could result, right? It could be that it's inherent in the groundwater. Or there could be a connection to a superficial water body through the groundwater, which would result in both cases in the need for some sort of mitigation. Typically, that has to do with a, a treatment system that would be proposed and approved by the state agencies. And that's the safe piece.
Board members, questions? Chris is Thomas. Peter, go ahead.
So it's a time that you're measuring withdrawal, are you also measuring recharge? I mean, is that part of the process as well?
Um, you, you get an understanding of what that recharge would be based on how far down you, you, your elevation in the well is reduced. So, for example, if you're in it, if you're in a proposed water supply well, and you're pumping at the, at the level at which you think you need for your project, and that well goes dry, then you don't have enough water. And you either have to advance your well further, or find yourself another place to, to drill a well. You can put multiple wells in an area to try to provide the water that's needed for, for your, you know, for, for your project.
Okay.
Did I answer your question, Peter?
Yeah. Thank you.
Others? Chris, I, I'm going to just point to a part of the part three. I'm, it sounds like that the study that will satisfy the knowledge of that is under number eight, utilities, water supply, letter D, page five. Page five, number eight, utilities, water supply, letter D. If you could just flip to that and tell me if that, that study will actually provide us the information needed to understand that topic.
Um, yes, and I, if Ron has any comments on that, I, I would certainly like to hear his input.
That's our intent, certainly, is, is to satisfy that under that particular section, and we're bringing in a specialist to deal with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue then. Then we had the air topic that you guys added some commentary on, or any other comments on the, so page 10 is the AKRF commenter in air. I, I can't, again, I can't remember who raised the question, but it seems like no one has any, no one has any augmentation to the no on the EF part two on air. Does anyone have any questions, though, on the AKRF response to the board? Questions on air? Going once. Going twice. Okay, let's move on to item number seven, then, in the EF part two, impact on plants and animals. The applicant has done a yellow, or has made a change on question, sub-question G and J. Any comments or questions? Peter, go ahead, please.
I was curious as to know what exactly the habitat assessment is going to be composed of?
From my perspective, it's going to, and it's, it's, it's discussed a bit in, in the, in the scope to evaluate the habitat on site associated with the special concern species that have been identified by the state. And AKRF has also asked that we look into other resources and source material besides New York State D E C Natural Heritage Program. So I think we're going to try to identify any species of concern, threatened, endangered, rare, and then evaluate the onsite habitat to determine whether there's habitat on site that would support such species. And then, if so, are we impacting that habitat by our development?
Okay, is there gonna be a map uh, made of this, do you think?
To the extent that there's habitat, I would, I I think that would be a reasonable request, especially if the habitat's vegetative. We have had an ecological study done of the site, which we're gonna provide to you. And there's climate associated with that. So to the extent that we can map certain things to to illustrate them better, I think that's always helpful. And uh, I certainly wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on item number seven? Heidi, please go ahead.
Well, I just um, was wondering if, I I think Laura or somebody else last time asked if um, there could also be examination of how the construction schedule would affect habitat, animal habitat. Uh, and I was wondering if that's gonna be incorporated into the study?
Yes, one hundred percent, yeah.
Are, and are you considering the fact that there's a very um, that um, the, there's amphibian, a lot of amphibian migration in this area in the spring? And um, and and it's a, you know, a lot of volunteers come out to help amphibians across the street. I know there's a, there's um, a widder body right near the the road and that's an issue here. So I'm just wondering if if, you know, you're gonna take that into account.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for a moment and can Mr. Canning be let in, Cheryl? Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I don't see him.
Let me find out if he's under a different name. He was texting me that he was here, so give me one second.
All the names I recognize.
Did Andy Schmartin, did John Kane change his name to Andy Schmar? That can't be true. I'll call him on his cell phone and find out what's going on and I'll report back. Let's, let's, let's keep the. Heidi, did you finish your question?
Well, I just wanted to, it was more a comment that I'm hoping that they'll consider that in this, in this this document that's gonna examine effects on wildlife. Kind of earlier to this area, I think.
That's a good point. I I have a related question. So, Yod, how are you gonna do a study that is gonna test nesting and breeding that's done in the next month in the summer within a four-week period? Given that nesting and breeding, I assume for different species happens over different periodicities uh, over a period of time without my, without, my, the intent of my question is not to ask you to take a year to study it across four seasons. I'm just trying to understand, how do you do that study in a one, you know, eight percent of the calendar year?
My approach on the, on the two species that came back to us, the bat and the bald eagle, both of which have been identified by the state as not being on the site, but some distance away. Uh, one, three quarters of a mile, the other one, I think, four miles. We did get correspondence back from the state that indicated that if we did our tree removal at certain times of the year, that that would satisfy and be enough mitigation for them. So I'm hoping not to have to do a a huge habitat assessment for those two species. One, because they're not known to be on the site. And two, we would hope to um, comply with the timeframes that have been recommended by the state to a- as the mitigative measure. So that would be my approach on that.
I I, thank you. I ask it because item letter G, and I know we're sort of bleeding into the part three, but item letter G talks about the, has a moderate to large impact may occur tied to substantially interfering with nesting, breeding, foraging, overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site, which is not related to bald eagle and whatever the other animal you were describing is, is talking about whoever's using the site, whatever is using the site, I should say.
Yeah, that's um, we were asked to check that box. It's not one that we had originally checked. I I thought the rationale for checking the box was because they want us, wanted the board and AKRF wanted us to evaluate the the species of concern. So it wasn't our intent to do to evaluate everything that's on the site. It was the 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 known species that are, you know, threatened, endangered, rare, special concern species as listed by, you know, the state and federal government. And and that would be it mainly because, you know, our limits of disturbance in in the the project is occurring in an already disturbed portion of the site.
Yeah, I hear you. I think part of the reason why it's moved, and I may have been one of the ones who was uh, thinking about this one is I think there's a conversation that people think about, and we've heard this early in the letters that have been sent, that because this site in the portion you're gonna occupy will now be used all year round as opposed to golf, which ends at, you know, whatever, October. And then the site is effectively sort of a free-for-all for uh, animal kind until until the next season. And then I think the conversation was around what then is being disturbed with anything in wildlife that was using the areas that were once effectively fallow land for nine months or eight months or around eight months it was versus this new usage. I think that's the spirit of the, of the, of the shift in that question.
Okay, I didn't pick up on that. And if that's the case, that that's not covered in our document right now in the part three, like that type of assessment. So we would have to, we'd have to discuss that.
And we can pick that back up when we get to the uh, part three, but I think that's, that is the spirit of that question.
Gotcha.
With that, that lighted item G. Other things on item number seven, uh, impact on plants and animals, the board. Okay, number eight, impact on agricultural resources. There's been no change. Any board member have any questions on item number? Going once. Going twice. Okay. Okay, item number nine then, impact on aesthetic resources. Also unchanged. Board members, any questions?
Done change, but we did have another response to a question from you guys last time, which is on page ten of the memo. It was really just, folks were wondering if there's an actual list of resources for this area that they can look at to determine if there's aesthetic impacts. We did a little more digging on that. I think Storm King Mountain was something that someone, I think maybe it was Ms. Connor mentioned Storm King Mountain. Is that something that is officially listed somewhere that we need to consider here? So what we did was we just, you know, we asked around our, some of our folks that do this analysis regularly. They pointed us to obviously the D E C guidance document, which is usually the driving document for any kind of these uh, aesthetic analysis. But within that document was, there's a link to it in our memo. It does list the categories of of resources that you should consider. And it also, one of those categories is the um, scenic areas of statewide significance, in which case there is one for this area. It's the Hudson Highlands subunits of that particular statewide significance area. And we also have a link to that document. So, you know, we recommend the applicant take a look at both of those and the board is free to obviously as well. And just take a look at the lists there and what, based on those lists, what what they think additional other resources should be considered for this. I know right now they're looking at views from all the roads around the site because the site is within the overlay district, the scenic overlay district, all those roads are, and they've, I think they've demonstrated they they will look at the site from those vantage points. They also have a view from across the river looking into the site from, I think it was nine W. So we just asked that they also take a look at some of these other categories to make sure there's nothing else around here that would warrant a look. So that's, that's what we provided.
Good, can I ask you?
A lot of information there, you know, a lot of links to click on, but yeah, sure, go ahead, Kim.
So just in terms of the links in the memo, when we download this memo, my um, software strips all of those scripts and links. So they, they're not live. So if there's a for um, for um, security purposes, so I probably have heavy-duty security software. So that means that since I uploaded this document to the website, those links aren't gonna work in the document that's on the website. Is there a way that you could, because they say things like found here instead of actually giving an actual link?
Yeah, because they tend to be long and.
Yeah, is there any way you could export like a some kind of addenda document that would list those links? I bet the links act, actually are, and then we'll put that up on the website.
Sure thing.
Okay, thank you.
That was, that was Kim as webmaster for uh, the planning board, uh, which we appreciate.
I just don't wanna get any complaints, you know.
Does that apply for the air quality links, too?
I I.
I think it's the whole document.
Every link in the document got stripped when I uploaded it, so.
Alright, no problem.
Well, we know Kim will be protected from the Russians, so that's good. Alright, other, other comments on aesthetic resources? One. Okay, number ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources. No, anyone? Bueller? Okay, go once. Twice, okay. Item number eleven, I just wanna make a statement. This has been something that we continually get questions on from the the public. I just, I'm just gonna respond in our last conversation, which we had very clearly, I'm gonna just restate it for those listening. This topic, it says the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource. So first of all, you can have a real debate about whether golf is a reduction of open space or a loss of recreational resource opportunities. You can debate whether that's a, you know, a generally publicly available thing, or it's required for a small minority that can afford golf clubs and and the like. And I'm not gonna get into a debate about what one thinks about golf, but it clearly is not a, somebody you go take a stick and go run out there. It's not a cheap sport and it's not, it's not uh, it's it's got its own audience. Second thing is Mr. Davis has, is contributing a significant amount of land that will now be new and truly fallow open space, which did not exist before this application. And I believe therefore the board took those two factors in mind to say that, in fact, this is not a loss in recreational opportunities. Some could say it's an equal change at a minimum because maybe people value the the golf more than the open space, but it's definitely, it's at least the board's viewpoint, not a loss of recreational opportunity. It sounds like it's a plus, a minus with a plus. And that sounds like if not a gain, it led a minimum and equal judgment. And that's not my opinion. I'm just sharing the the the, if you will, the the arithmetic, the qualitative arithmetic of the board. So, and if any of my board members disagree with that interpretation of why we checked no on this, please speak now. So I hope the members of the public will keep asking this question, have heard us loud and clear about why we've checked no. We, since it's our document, have checked no on number eleven. Any comments? Well, by the way, I'm just talking to a couple of folks who are just very squeaky out there about this topic, so just, and let me, just give me the latitude to say this, if you will. So board members on item number eleven, any, any comments? Peter, go ahead, please.
It mentions down at the bottom of that uh, of eleven that uh, may result in the loss of the area now used informally by the community as an open space resource. Where else is that addressed so that people will feel that this is not going to become a private space and that there will be public access to it?
That's a good question. It's it's definitely addressed. It's addressed in our or zoning and layout section and and just like in the overall uh, project script. Because we're writing that, you know, now, um, I could tell you for absolute certainty that there's quite a bit of information in the document about that particular concern.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Other comments on number eleven? For once. Twice. Okay, item number twelve, impact on critical environmental areas. No change and so no, any comments? Once. Okay, item number thirteen, transportation. I've I've been obviously vocal on this topic and I appreciate the addition of item of the letter F on this traffic study uh, and and mitigations. And I did discuss last time a mitigation I'd like to, for consideration related to the use of Snake Hill only for ingress, not for egress, given the the volume of traffic dumping onto county road uh, at night after events. But that's not for this topic. I just wanna see if there's any other comments on item number thirteen, impact and transportation. Once. Twenty. Okay, let's move on. Then impact on energy, item number fourteen. Any comments? Going once. Going twice, okay. Item, is everyone, is this pace okay? Are we going too fast, board members? We go at the right pace? I don't know, it's, you know, it's, I just wanna make sure everyone's comfortable. Alright, number fifteen, noise, odor and light. I believe is a right, Yon, you changed A to a moderate to large, correct? Is that the yellow I'm seeing?
Yes.
Okay.
Fifteen A.
Thank you. Other comments? For once. Twice. Number sixteen, human health. Any comments on human health?
I just wanna, I just wanna say I'm glad that um, they added M because I think that's important. I think it's always important to know what was on a site before, you know, so that you know what you're getting into.
Okay. Number seventeen, consistent with community plans. Thank you for the applicant for making those adjustments for us. Comments on seventeen? Sorry, I had to kill a bug. It's just crawling on the wall there. Okay.
We don't have to study that, do we?
I can get the carcass for you. Alright, number seventeen, any comments? Yeah, Peter, go ahead, please.
Uh, just have a uh, question about A. Why was that, uh, why is that moderate to large? They don't really seem to be in sharp contrast to the surrounding land use. I don't know, just wondering why that's large. Is that because it's no longer a golf course or uh, there's a major change afoot in terms of its land use?
Well, I look, in this person's humble opinion is that we're gonna have a, not just one, but two theaters, one outdoor, one indoor, in the middle of what is mostly the rest of the land use is either residential or it's in.
I hadn't even thought of that.
That's, that's at least my opinion why it's a moderate impact. And having an outdoor, indoor theater that's a permanent full-year building is meaning of two hundred and fifty seats is at least this one person's opinion, a meaningful change. And that having a, having a theater in our town, which we don't have one, would be in sharp contrast to, in my opinion, a large theater of that size. Go ahead, Kim.
The Philip Sound Depot Theater is in our. The Philip Sound Depot Theater is in our town.
Yeah, but it's not the same as, it's not a 250.
It's a theater, no, but it's still a theater.
Yeah, I'm sitting, I'm sitting about 50 feet from it right now, it is not the same as a 250 seat theater.
But it's still a theater.
And it's a lovely one at that, and thank God for the, thank, thank God for the New York Central to give it to us. Okay. Others, good question, Peter, and people may disagree with my interpretation.
No, it was a good, it was a good point, I was thinking of the land and I'd totally forgotten that there's going to be structures all over it.
Other comments on 17? Okay, and finally, number 18, consistency with community character. Comments?
I think these are all right, yeah, I think we did a good job last month, you know, and. Asking everything, I think they did a good job in highlighting what we asked. You know, I think that's why there aren't that many questions, because we said it all.
Hey, I'm go, hey, look, I would have been happy just to adopt it, but I want to make sure every board member feels like they've had the chance to comment, and this has not been, we're not, we're going at a measured pace in terms of the complexity of this, so. I know AKR, if you said something effective, we, in one of your parts, you remember that you don't typically see us adopting EF part twos before the part three. I I and I appreciate that sentiment, I think, given that we've taken this milestone, I in fact would like to do in fact that, to adopt the part two. As we've done in other settings, because I think it is an important document for for acceptance at this point, so I thank you for that comment. Ron or Steve, before we, I make and ask for a motion to accept the part two, anything you want to add?
No, I have nothing.
I think you did a very thorough job.
Oh, that was nice, Steve, thank you to the the everyone here, and Kim, I all I could say is, Kim, I second what you said. Alright, so you can have a motion to accept that, the E F part two, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Peter, okay, any comments or any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extensions, okay, thank, thank you, everyone, I know that was lengthy process, but I think done well, alright, so let's jump into the part three. I'm going to ask that instead of going line by line again, because I think this is in a different order. In different buckets, I think we've had this before multiple times, I'm just going to go around each board member and see if you have questions, if things you want, you you have not seen. I think we highlight, I highlighted one yawn earlier related to the the. The fauna tied to that letter. Item number seven, letter G, and I'd like to just understand what we're what we're dealing with on the property related to that, but I I I'll defer to my colleagues and come to myself last. And just maybe I'll start with Kim and see if she has any items of part three she would like to see added or augmented in any way.
I think that. My main comment just has to do with the maps and consistency with legends and things. Because, you know, I know this isn't exactly part three, but it's the additions to part three. I wrote down, for example, that on the constraints plan, it would be nice to have a legend, on the removal plan, it'd be nice to have a legend on the erosion control, you know, because we. See these different colored lines, but there isn't necessarily anything to. Let me know what that is, and I have to go back and look at something else in order to find it, so I would just appreciate that.
You can do that.
And then. The same thing with the sound map survey, there are measurement locations that have numbers on them on page two. But the numbers are white and they completely blend into the background, so it's almost, for those of us who don't see so well. It's also almost impossible to see where they are, so just if that could be darker, bolder. Whatever, but in terms of.
Y'all may made note of that, we'll change that for you.
Yeah, in terms of the outline, you know, like I said before, I think that, you know, this is very thorough and. I don't have anything that I particularly want to add, so I will yield to the next person who has a question.
Well, the next person in my picture, my screen is Peter, so Peter, anything you want to add or augment on the part three?
I know, I thought it was really thorough and. If it comes to fruition, it's going to be Tolstoy and length, but. I think I think it's going to be great, I think it's very good so far. That's my two cents.
Chairman, on the, Kim's comment about the maps, what we're trying to do also is just incorporate a lot of. A bit into the. In a particular section, the wetland or water course section, instead of going for the the big set of plans, you know, we'll have. An exhibit that speaks to that particular issue, you know, right next in, you know, the next page after that section, so you could kind of. Not have to be so cumbersome with the the full set of plans, so we're trying to have a lot of visual aids to go along with the text.
Great.
Thank you, Peter, anything else? Nope, Heidi, you're next on my screen.
Okay, um, well, I'm I'm looking at the vegetation and wildlife section, and I'm a little confused as to exactly what you're going to. Study, because I thought, Yanni, you had said that you're just going to look at the two protected species, and this. Description here seems to be much more general than that, and looking at all, at least describe the existing ecological communities on the parcel. So I guess. Does that mean? I mean, just is. I'm just trying to make it, get a sense of, based on what you had said earlier, that you're really going to just study the two protected species, are you going to look at all the species and? And kind of see what's there throughout the year?
That was not our intent to study all the species on the site. What what we would do is, we are going to evaluate all the ecological communities, and we're going to map them. But we're going to go to the DEC, we're going to go to the IPAC database, we're going to go to the US Fish and Wildlife. And we're going to get information from them as to what. If any rare, special concern, threatened endangered species are on or adjacent to the site, we know of two of them already, because we've gotten feedback from the state DEC. There could be others when we when we evaluate the other source information. And then we're going to evaluate the impact, if any, on those species from the development. What is not included in here is like a complete biodiversity study of the entire site. And evaluating everything that, you know, walks across the site or flies across the site in a in a given year. Because of. The fact that the sites been developed and we're working within the confines of that. Development and the amount of land being preserved, we didn't feel that was necessary, but. You know. We're hoping not to do a year round study. All the the different. Wildlife that's on the property, habitat, absolutely, we can evaluate the habitat, and now a lot of that's been done, and we could say, okay, we have the these types of habitat. And this is what's typically found in that habitat, and are we impacting? Anything of significance that would potentially have an impact? That's what I would like to do without having to actually spend. You know. Numerous seasons with feet on the ground visually observing everything that. Crosses the site.
And is there going to be, are there going to be biologists and, and I don't know if you're a scientist, actually, I apologize for that, but.
No, I'm not, that's not my my specialty.
If you mind if I jump in for a moment, Heidi, I think we, I think we mentioned this last time. When we first started the project, we had some of the same questions as you. So Applied Ecological Services was hired to do an assessment of the site. Where they walked around, they looked at all the different stands of trees, they did a report, so we will be including that report from that group. Who are commissioned to do this exact type of work that you're asking about, and as Yann's describing, it's high level, it tells us, you know. This is a beach maple hardwood forest, we saw a couple birds, it's typical habitat for. This type of animal, but we didn't see any during the site, so it'll give you a really broad overview, and I. I don't, I'm not quoting the report, but I do remember they said that interior where the golf courses had. Very little value or activity, so I think that what we will be providing you from that team will help answer a lot of those questions that you have been bringing up. Which we hear, and we had the same ones.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that.
We're also trying to demonstrate that we're not going to have any sort of habitat fragmentation, or, you know, just, our project is not. Going to have that that type of impact where I think you'd be concerned about. Wildlife impact, because it's it's, the improvements are taking place on portions of the property that are really developed already.
Right.
We're not going to be prohibiting any any movement of wildlife, I think it's going to be much the same as it is today. But to Neil's point, I would, I mean, I would, I would ask for an opportunity to speak to AKRF to discuss. Hopefully some sort of middle ground on on maybe taking it a step further so that you're comfortable. And you know that we're taking a hard look at at everything, but hopefully not getting to the point where we're. We're into a year long.
Yeah, and I I I personally would like to avoid that as well on your behalf, just because I think this is exactly as you said, we're not talking about some foul land that has been untouched by nature, untouched by man, and all of a sudden we're going in, which is something we had to deal with. A couple of other previous cases, so I think there should be some some accommodation for that, but I think answering the questions. If you're if you're ecological indoor habitat studies, I do want AKR to work with you about what kind of additional studies, because I'm not a scientist. Just dumb business guy. Can solve that for us while being appreciative of your time would be helpful, so, and we'll get to AKRF at the end of this, Chris and Aaron. Okay, thank you, Heidi, others, Heidi, other points, Heidi?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Laura?
Um, I just only have two questions, so the first one is, and and Yann, you may have answered this last month, and I've completely forgotten. Is in the environmental site assessment, are we taking samples, soil samples?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to make, I think, the scope right now is, yes, ground samples and surface water samples.
Okay, and then so areas of where you're going to be doing construction, so where you're going to actually be digging further down, you're going to be taking samples all the way through to the point at which you hit.
Well. The the proposal now is, you know, it's a phase one, a a phase one and a limited phase two. And because of the golf course use, the the zone of concern is 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 not necessarily very deep. So I think that the scientists would go down as deep as expected or needed, but you know, we're not. Proposing to do like borings to the bedrock or anything like that, it would be more the upper horizons where. Soil could have been potentially contaminated by the past golf course use, the surface water, so.
Okay.
But we're going to, we're going to have. Our hydrogeologists consult with AKRF, so there's a meeting of the minds as to exactly what should be done. So the scope of work is kind of agreed upon before it's executed.
Okay, and then I just have a comment regarding traffic, so I read Kimberly Horn's. Report in the back in the appendix, and my question is this, does it make sense, and maybe this is too premature. In some of the issues of the traffic study that they're doing, does it make sense to for Kimberly Horn to also look at a potential internal traffic mitigation plan? Meaning, before you hit Route 9, before you hit Snake Hill, are there any sort of mitigation? You know, operational ways of, you know, mitigating the traffic internally to be able to reduce the impact in the flow coming out. Into and then impacting the Route 9 and Snake Hill. You know, so that you kind of technically own a little bit of that process, so I don't know if that's something that, you know, would be helpful for us to look at. It may be too premature at this point, but you do have a roadway and a pathway, so. It would make sense that maybe if you map that out, it would be helpful for us to see that a little bit. Clear and understand what the impact is to the road. That's just a suggestion, and then the other thing is, is that I remember at the first walkthrough, and this is actually a question to the board. And actually, maybe to Glenn, when we did the walkthrough and we were walking towards the path, there was a comment about. The fire department needing a side path to entrance, to enter the site, is that still on the books?
You mean up near the the garrison?
No, so it was on, it was going to be, well, the suggested path was on Route 9, kind of near where the cottages were going to be.
Right.
That, that is not, you, we will go, we were talking about extending the lower road behind the restaurant out to Route 9. At a at a previous entry point. And what has happened to because of the movement of the artist lodging. Off of the that front site, or mostly off of that front site, we were able to redirect the entry road. Down and around, so we wouldn't have to have another entry onto Route 9, and we have to. Slightly realign that route to to make it so works for delivery trucks and fire trucks, but not to any great extent, so. We have addressed it in a different way.
Okay, got it, thank you, that's it for me.
I so I do want to endorse what Laura said, I thought that's a really interesting idea about internal. Traffic flow, again, I've made a view which I think is tough for the neighborhood to have. Traffic aggressing after a big night of multiple things happening at the site onto both Route 9 and the Snake Hill, making local traffic more difficult. But I think also Laura's point about how you use the interior for flow. Is useful and important and worth talking about, so I whatever those levers are, I think is worthy, see Kim nodding her head and endorsement of that as well.
Great idea.
That that will be done.
Good, thank you, Laura, next on my screen is Neil Toman.
Thanks, Neil, no, I I. I think we're on, I I like the outline, I think I I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Man, a few words, well, that's tough for a politician to, a few words, well done, Neil, breaking bucking trends, Dennis Gagnon, any comments?
He, yes, I'm happy with the expanded scope, so I'm good to go with that.
Thank you, Dennis, so I I've made my comments along the way, so I have no additional ones, AKRF, I know you've listed in many places where. Not included and for or not been addressed for purposes of speed, given it's 10 o'clock, I wonder if. The applicant is willing to accept AKRF's comments as things you'd look to to add were appropriate. And I realize that's covering several pages, but instead of having Chris and Aaron re-read everything in here where it says is not addressed. Are there any places where you disagree with their request for being addressed?
I I wouldn't say disagree, just that needs to be fine tuned a little bit, and we'll, within the next week, if we can meet with Aaron and Chris, we can smooth it all over, I'm sure.
I I, Aaron and Chris, are there things you want to raise in particular in a public forum, are you comfortable meeting privately with Dan and company and Yann?
I know, I think. In the past, we've worked through the comments that we provided and come up with an approach that I think we all agreed with, so. As long as the board and we chair are fine with that approach, we can certainly work with the applicants team to. Address the comments we have and where there are some questions, and we already have started a conversation about one of the questions on the traffic and the use of which particular synchro mile. We can, we can sort of work through that and then come to terms with how best to address it so that the final product is is. Takes the hard look that's required. The final product is, is, um, uh, takes the hard look that's required, yeah.
I don't think. Uh, we didn't object to any of them. It's just more seeking clarification on a couple of things, so we know that we're providing, um, what's requested.
Well, I'm happy to give some views on Synchro eighty-five. I've got lots of views on that. No, but seriously, Chris and Aaron, are there any, um, points you need that you felt like you had to be raised for the board's attention on, tied to your commentary? Uh, that we should bring to our attention related to this topic. I'm not saying they're not, some are major, some are probably more minor, like the, the methodology, probably less, less, uh. Uh, helpful to the board to understand.
One, I think, is still clear, like, I think, and it's also in the outline, but just to make sure, right, because I understand. The applicant wants to start getting things in. Um, there was a note in there about providing a map of the visual. Receptors for the visual study, um, that would require the board to sign off before actually proceeding with. Study. Is that something that is coming soon?
I think that was already in there from.
Yeah, we, we had that map.
Okay, so then I guess on top of that would just be taking a look at the, the list of other possible. Um, resources and seeing if there's anything that needs to be added and maybe something that we can discuss.
That's one of the items we wanted to discuss because, uh, having gone through those resources, we just want to make sure that we're, we're covering everything. So that was really the main point of having a, a conversation with you.
And I think the board was okay with the map at the last meeting. They just had that question about, are we missing anything? Right? So that's.
When we added a few since the last meeting based on the board's input.
Okay.
So I, just to clarify, I know, Kim, you had brought up a couple of points and. Aaron, actually, these all fall under some of the documents that you have, have reminded everybody to look at for some of the aesthetic resources. So we will highlight those, but Kim, I know, I remember last time you were asking specifically about the trails at Breakneck and at Bull Hill. So we added that in. We have views of those, both leaf on, leaf off. So we've expanded based on your recommendations. I think we've got everything. I don't know, it's, it's in the.
Vantage point conversation, right? Where you can see things.
Yes. And so we did re, we did expand those, the, the options for what we were looking at and that. Unless there's something, I think we covered everything you guys were talking about and we can clarify that, Aaron, even further, if there was anything else you had looked at.
Okay, back to Aaron and, uh, and Chris, anything else you want to raise in front of the board at this point before we adopt the part three outline?
Um, just, just sort of one point of, of clarification. And this goes back to, to, um, Heidi, your comments with regard to, and, and, um, your comments with regard to. Uh, the vegetation and wildlife surveys. Um, we'll, you know, we'll talk with the applicant again about sort of the approach to that. And Neil, I think, you know, your, your guidance about not wanting to burden the applicant with, um. Uh, endless surveys is, is a, is a good point. What generally, generally how these play out is, um, for the, for the board's understanding. Is that, um, uh, where there are species identified by a regulatory agency, whether it be the, um, US Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries, not in this case. D E C and the like, um, that's the focus of the studies for the species that are gonna be, um, assessed during the environmental review. Um, as Yon had mentioned, there is, uh, and they will be providing, um, a habitat assessment. And Lanny had mentioned that they've already done a lot of this work. Typically with the goal of these, um, assessments are, is to identify species that are likely to be present on the project site. And then you use that as your baseline to determine what the impacts to those likely species are. The, the, um, and this is just sort of for clarification purposes. Going through and trying to identify species by going and, and, um, doing data collection generally leads to. Sometimes pretty comprehensive lists, but there are generally species that are missed, no matter how often you go out and look. So what we found is that we're better off compiling a comprehensive conservative list based on habitats that are present on the site. And using that list of species is something, um, for which the assessment will be based on. Um, so what you'll get is, um, a list of species that were observed during the, the assessments. A list of species that are, were identified by, by the regulatory agencies and a list of species that, um, are likely to be present on the project site. And then all of those will be assessed during the, um, you know, during the environmental review process and the hard look that the, um, that the applicant will prepare for. This part three. So I hope that's helpful.
It, it is helpful. Thank you, Chris. I think we should also take advantage of not just, since we will not get the seasonality. I do think we, there would be some value in maybe the, it, it, one of the conditions that is changing the site is that. If normally, um, across the course, the golf course, people are done at dusk. Uh, here we're gonna be operating at certain times until eleven o'clock at night, which is not that many hours, but it is a couple of hours of nighttime. And so understanding if there's anything that happens in those couple of hours between dusk and the end of the, the shows. Uh, would be something to be, and, and observable, I suspect during the, during the next few weeks without actually affecting, you know, asking you to do a survey out in December. So I, I understand that a little bit would be, would be helpful. And again, I, I, I am, I'm comfortable, at least individually, with AKRF working with the applicant to, to, to find what is reasonable and achievable. Heidi, please.
Uh, well, I would just like to comment that I, I think that there should be a walkthrough of the, the site, you know, I, I. Just to make sure there isn't, I, I, I doubt there would be, but what if there's, you know, a, a, a very rare. You know, fish in that pond or, or, I, I don't know, a bird, some birds nesting on the site that are very rare. But the, but that the D E C, I can tell you that the D E C does not know where every single creature is in this area because. I've seen northern fence lizards, you know, a hundred feet from my house and reported it to them. And those are threatens, that's a threatened species. I have photos and the geomapping. Um, and not to go on about it, but they didn't know. I mean, they, I, I would just say I would feel better if there was a walkthrough, which maybe has already been done. But to have a biologist or somebody who, a naturalist of some kind walk through the site and make sure we're not missing anything. Just make sure there's nothing, I understand they might, the creature might not be out and about at that particular moment, but. I think it would be helpful as part of a survey, in my opinion, and maybe it's not required. But to have some science, scientific person walk through the site and say, yeah, okay, I looked around, there's, you know, there isn't, uh. We're not gonna be putting the theater right on top of, you know, uh, uh, the rusty patch bumblebee, that kind of thing. Just in, you know, anyway, maybe it's not required. I, I, I think it's, it, it would be good to do.
Heidi, I think the documentation that we're talking about will help relieve you of those concerns. I think we have sufficient information in multiple forms that will help clarify that we are not impacting. Any animals habitat or taking out a forest or, you know, those big concerns, I think. And if not, we can discuss it once you've read the document, but I do.
Lanny, can I just, can I just get, I want to be pointed in my, and I want to point, be pointing with Heidi's asking, let me just put you on the spot for a second in a binary way. Which is, has someone already or will someone be walking to the physical locations of the new builds? And Heidi's example, where you want to put up a, a, uh, an indoor theater at that spot. I don't know what hole that is.
Yes, that's, but, I mean.
Someone walked that spot.
The whole site has been walked. So it's the whole.
By a biologist who can answer those kind of questions?
The entire property, including the parts that are going to the conserva, you know, that are, we're proposing go to a conservation. Everything has been. On foot by our conservation biologist.
Great. Fabulous. Thank you.
Anything else? AK, back to Chris and Aaron, anything else?
And I think the rest of it is, is, um. You know, can be discussed with the applicant's team and we'll work through, um, what concerns they have with regard to our comments and come to, uh, an agreement as to how to address those.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a request and Steve and, uh, Ron to accept the part three conditional. I know, you think we can?
Well, here's the thing, um, the part three is a part three. What.
The part three outline, the outline.
Well, yeah, but there, there really is no such thing. They've, they've put together an outline in, in an effort to get feedback from the board. As to what you'd like to see in a part three. So when they put the part three together, you're not saying, oh, go pick out this other issue, go run down that other issue, which may happen anyway, by the way, once you take a look at it.
Yeah.
You try to avoid that, but there isn't actually a vote on this, this outline. I think you've given them good feedback. I think the, the board appreciates regardless. But you don't, there's no need to take a formal vote.
Good. Well, there you go.
And we'll flesh out the outline for the July fifteenth meeting.
Well, you give us a status where you're on the fifteenth of where you are. We're not gonna go through each piece of the reports that you've developed. That would be.
Yeah.
Difficult. Unless you're thinking something else, Dan.
No, we, uh, you'll have a, uh, we, we've been working on it already and you'll, you'll have it on July first. So. You know, there'll be questions we can go through about the responses, uh, but you'll have most of them covered in that document we'll be submitting shortly.
As Peter Lewis said, if it's, if it's anything like War and Peace, we ain't gonna be done in a one hour session on, in July. So let's just set expectations, okay? Cause I'm a slow reader. I'm a slow reader. I may love to read, but I'm slow, so.
No, I, I, I understand, but it, it's, it's not exactly, uh, uh, you know, uh. Gibbons' history of Western civilization, but it, it, it's comprehensive.
Well, Bob Flory is a fast reader. He'll get it done before the rest of us, but, uh, the rest, I'll, I'll be the slow one reading. All right. Anything else for tonight? It's been a long, long meeting, lots of progress made. I want to thank him and, uh, Neil Toman for taking care of those two topics that I was refused from. Anything else from the applicant?
Well, we'll see you on July fifteenth.
We shall see you then. Uh, board members, anything else you want to raise?
I want to say two things. Um, one is thank you, Glenn, for having a really good map folding machine. Really appreciate that. And two, thank you, Cecilia, for all these late nights when we don't see you.
Oh, well said, well said.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you.
Well said, Kim. Anyone else? Any of the board members? Okay, motion to adjourn then?
I made that motion.
Peter, second, everyone. Okay, good night, all.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye.
Take care.